So we're starting with the audit report.
My name is Nicole Ruff. I am from Drescher and Malecki. We're here tonight to present the results of your audit from June 30th, 2020. We're in the final stages right now of the review process so that the board can approve the financial statements at the next meeting on October 14. The first slide is the products of our audit. They have not changed from the previous year. The first is the basic financial statements. And in those financial statements, there are three different opinions. The first is going to be the opinion on your financial statements, and that opinion is unmodified, so it's a clean opinion. The second opinion is a gas opinion, and that's on your internal controls. So if you were to have a material weakness in internal controls or a significant deficiency, you would have that in your financial statements, and we did not come across any of those. The third opinion that we have this year is that the district received in excess of $750,000 in federal aid, and that triggered a compliance audit of your federal aid programs. So what we did is we did a risk assessment, and we tested your child nutrition program. And if there were any compliance findings, we'd have to disclose them to you. We did not have any of those. So there will be that third section this year that you have not had in the past. The second item is your management letter. So we discussed a couple of items with the Audit Committee, and you'll get that letter that just has recommendations that we have for the district. The third letter is your auditor communications letter, and we went through those required communications with the Audit Committee prior to this meeting. And the last item is your extra classroom activity report. So those activities, we did perform an audit on as well as your financial statements, and we issue a separate opinion on those, and we issued an unmodified opinion, which is again, a clean opinion, the highest opinion that you can receive. If you flip to the next slide, I'll just quickly go through the financial data for the year. Revenues and expenditures this year slightly increased from the previous year, the difference there being about $765,000 between revenues and expenditures that were added to fund balance. There was an increase in property taxes that was offset by a decrease in your refund from BOCs, which resulted in about a $224,000 increase from the previous year in your revenues. On the expense side, your expenses increased about $725,000 from the previous year, and that's due to an increase in principal payments on debt. There was a debt issuance in the previous year, and that debt payment was about $910,000 in the current year. If you flip to the next slide, that shows your fund balance trend for the last five years, and your total fund balance increased in the general fund to $15 million. Of that $15 million, 11.2% is considered restricted, and 3.8% is considered unrestricted. So that restricted fund balance, there are certain rules and regulations surrounding how that money can be spent. And then if we flip to the next slide, we can look at your unrestricted fund balance, which is also made up of two different portions. That red portion is what's considered a sign. So that's money that has been used to balance your 2021 budget and encumbrance, which represent purchase orders and contracts that you've entered into in 2020 that will be paid in 2021. So that total of $2.7 million is already accounted for. That leaves the district with $1.43 million of unassigned fund balance at the end of 2020, and that's the amount that can be used at the district's discretion. If you flip to the next slide, that amount is subject to real property tax law. The school districts are required to keep that amount at lower than 4% of your sub- appropriations, and the district is in compliance, that amount represents 3.2%. The last slide has our contact information if you have any questions. Does anyone have any questions tonight? Okay, thank you.
Do we have a request to withdraw specific items from the consent agenda? That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, consensus items be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
This is the approximate position in time that the board has designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements and respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status, for example, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, etc. There is a two-minute time limit.
Anybody?
No questions?
No questions. Anything on the chat there, Lucinda? Okay.
New business, resignations. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of teacher aide Samantha Taggart be accepted effective August 17th, 2020. The board and administration wish to thank Ms. Taggart for her two years of service to the district.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of hall monitor Deborah Dentz be accepted effective September 10th, 2020. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Dentz for her two years of service to the district.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of cafeteria monitor Felicity Keller be accepted effective September 9th, 2020. The board and administration wish to thank Ms. Keller for her service to the district.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of school nurse Stefania Cooper be accepted effective September 15th, 2020. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Cooper for her two years of service to the district.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
New business appointments. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the February 25th, 2020, part-time appointment of Joseph Weiss be rescinded and reapproved as follows. Joseph Weiss be appointed as a part-time psychologist for the 2020-2021 school year. Salary is $32.08 per hour for a maximum of 80 days with no benefits and not to exceed $18,200.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Kathleen McKinnon be appointed on probation as a registered professional nurse effective September 8th, 2020 through March 7th, 2021. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level eight, step three.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Tracy Kehoe be appointed on probation as a teacher aide effective September 8th, 2020 through March 7th, 2021. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level four, step one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Jessica Walshleger be appointed as an occupational therapist effective October 20th, 2020. Salary is based, I'm sorry, October 2nd, 2020. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level, what is that, 14, step one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Claudia Hovey, who is initially certified in music, be appointed as a .66 FTE long-term substitute music teacher effective September 17th, 2020 and ending June 30th, 2021. Salary is based upon ETA contract, step one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Ashley Waldorf be permanently appointed as a clerk typist effective September 24th, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Alan Silver be appointed as the ESCAB budget and finance team representative.
Second.
Any discussion? Alan? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Thank you, Alan. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, nurse practitioner John Springer be appointed as the school medical officer for the term of September 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
New business, other? That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2020-2021 school calendar be amended.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can we tell, is this amendment for half day? What is this amendment for?
So this amendment is to move the half day from September 25th, which is a Friday, to September 23rd, which is a Wednesday.
So I've had a discussion with Mr. Sortisio about possibly looking at some of the other days that fall into a day off, like specifically Columbus Day. It's a Monday, so that day would not be for Cohort C. They'd only have one day of class that day. Just to start exploring that is a possible option, because then if you look at Thanksgiving, I think it's the next week that comes up that's an issue. What might be, so for instance, Cohort D wouldn't meet at all that week. So just throwing those options out there, I know we're just opening and reviewing things. So just something to think about as we move forward, not knowing how long we're going to be in this hybrid mode and things along those lines. So, I mean, it's only one day or two options at this point in time, but just something to start to think about.
Yeah, it's definitely worth thinking about, and I appreciate the discussion. I think one of the things we need to settle on, though, is what the goal is in adjusting the calendar. Is it equity within a week, or is it equity across a longer period of time? So I think we need to take a deeper look at what it looks like for each of those cohorts, probably by semester, before we start to make some of those adjustments. And I, and part of that reason is because we learned last Wednesday, the logistical challenges, not only for our staff, but for our community when we made that switch. So if we're going to change, change a day, it doesn't only affect our bus transportation and our teachers, but it affects our families and their home care and their childcare. So let's take a deeper look and look at that overall equity before we start to move days if I can.
I would agree, and if we do, if we do decide to make changes, I know for me personally, I've already submitted my own FMLD days into my district based on the days I already assumed my kids were going. So if we do decide to make changes, I'd like tons of notice for the parents if we could.
Okay, yeah, I agree. As much notice to any changes as possible. And you'll notice that I'm only asking to move one Friday to a Wednesday, the September date. We have three half-days in December as well. You know, looking at periods of time, when the, when this proposal first came out, seemed to make sense to work in a month or two. You shouldn't be surprised if I come back to you in maybe the November meeting and say, let's move those half-days to Wednesdays as well.
Just something to have some discussion on. We're all new to this at this point in time, so. All right, all in favor of the current proposed calendar change?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the bus routes for the 2020-2021 school year be approved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Laura, I would just like to say, I think this is the first time we've ever seen the routing, and I, I thought it was very well done, and it kind of gives us an idea of where our buses are running. So quote me if I'm wrong, maybe I missed it in the past years, but I think this is the first time I've ever seen that spreadsheet of what the budget, or what the buses' routes actually look like. And you can explain to where certain buses, as we're driving around the community, it's like, why are we seeing an Eden bus on this route from time to time? It makes a lot more sense, so thank you. Yes, she does. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the external audit report for the year ending June 30th, 2020, prepared by Drescher and Malecki, CPAs be approved.
Second.
Any discussion?
My only, oh, I'm sorry, Laura, did I interrupt you?
I was gonna say, I think we want to hold off on this one until the October 14th. It's up here, so you start to realize that you're going to be looking at it, because we don't have the final draft tonight.
So we're not approving it? Okay, so we're tabling it?
So do we table it, or do we oppose it?
I would table it.
All right, this motion, C, under New Business, is going to be tabled until the October 14th meeting.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, three occupational therapists and three certified occupational therapist assistant positions be added to the civil service inventory list for Eden.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just a point of clarification. These are new positions to the district. Last year, we contracted out for services at a certain price point. Since you approved the employment of an actual occupational therapist earlier in this meeting, we can now employ assistants, which will be our employees, and they'll do the same work that we contracted out for, and actually, a pretty significant financial savings.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Business report.
Well, USDA has extended the free meal for all students regardless of income levels through December 31st, so we have opted into that. So there will also be a pickup for remote learners on Tuesdays and Fridays from 2:30 to 5:00. Hopefully, the 5:00 PM helps parents that are working be able to pick up their student meals. So while students are in district, though, and they want to purchase à la carte items, they're still going to need money on those student accounts because we're doing a cashless cafeteria under the COVID model. So if you want your student to be able to buy ice cream or an extra piece of fruit, you can put money on their account either through my school box, or you can send in a check, and they'll be happy to put it on the account for the student. And then they'll like, you'll get a letter when the amounts are down. So we were notified on August 26th of some state aid reductions. So far, all these reductions affect the 1920 revenues and are reflected as a loss of revenue in our budget. At the time, we have no promise of obtaining these funds. So we've lost right around $196,000 already to date in the categories of excess cost aid, which pays for our special education student costs that exceed the district mandated amount. Our school lunch, while we receive the federal money, we've been reduced for breakfast and lunches for the state portion. We lost aid in the UPK program and in our summer school program. Our BOCs aid is our biggest loss. We typically get paid in September for the balance of our BOCs aid, and so that was reduced, the entire aid by 20%. So at this time, the hope is they're temporary, but the reality, it all depends on the funding that the state can get, because we're not the only areas they're cutting. So they're hoping to get federal dollars to help cover their costs so they can reinstate some of our state aid. And the last thing I would like to do is, with the start of school, I want to thank the departments that I supervise, which are buildings and grounds, who did a phenomenal job getting the buildings ready, keeping people's comfort level by sanitizing. I want to thank the transportation department for all the hard work. Typically, they get about six weeks to do routes. This week, they got two. So there was an extraordinary effort put forth by the people in our transportation department. And then I would also like to thank the business office and the district office for keeping things running in the background through all of this since March.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you. So first, I just want to give the board an update on our capital construction project. Earlier today, Mr. Sutton, Ms. Feldman, and Mr. Bliss and I met with Young and Wright and Campus Construction to just get an update on where we are. We had a good conversation to review the scope of the project again, really for Chad, and made it be just to be as up-to-date as possible. The SIKR 30-day review process is underway. That's a required review process that needs to be completed before it's presented to the board for your approval and prior to any resolution for a community referendum. I anticipate that both of those items will come to you at the October 14th Board Meeting. After, assuming that the board does approve a resolution for a community referendum, we're planning on a couple of different opportunities to meet with the public, to talk about the project, and do some presentations in the months of November and December as well. Any questions about the project at this point? So we opened schools last week, and it was really, really amazing, you know, and I know I sent out a correspondence to the board, letting you know how energizing it was to see students, adolescents, and children in classrooms and on buses and on campus. And, you know, I believe it went really smooth, considering what we were doing for the first time. As Laura pointed out, it was all hands on deck to create our plan and to make our plan work, including members of our community. So I'm very thankful for everyone who came together. We have a great partnership with all of our bargaining units in this district. Our CSEA folks have really stepped up, some of which are working out a title to be very helpful. Our teachers are really been amazing, and, you know, even though they have the opportunity to work remotely, probably 95% of them were on campus today. That's really wonderful. I want to thank our community members for truly being partners with us. We've asked them to do things differently as we do things differently, and you know I'm most likely talking about the COVID and attendance questionnaire that we ask for, asked to be done daily. And I have to tell you that the number of families completing that on our timeframe, which is a little stringent, has really improved dramatically in the last few days, and we're very appreciative of that. That is another layer of safety, just like the addition of the student temp scanners that we added since our last meeting. So we're doing things a little bit differently as well, and those have gone really well. You may be aware that daily now, I have to report to the New York State Department of Health, the number of students on campus, off campus, the number of staff on campus, off campus, any new identified cases of COVID or any suspected cases of COVID. All of that information gets rolled into a dashboard, which is available on the Department of Health website. And that's been, that's been a good collaborative effort with our nursing staff and with our administrative team as well. We continue to work very closely with the, with the Department of Health. I was in a meeting earlier today with a representative from the area county Department of Health, talking about return to school guidelines and what their recommendations are, and that they were updated last Friday, and I should expect another update tomorrow. So it's good to have that support and that information from a really wide, wide group of people that are experts in their field. And I'm, you know, just really excited that we're able to bring students back. Really look forward to the, when we can have all of them here, but we have to move slowly and methodically to get to that point. Any questions about the return to school? Okay, so I know Mr. Iwanko is here, and I'm sure the board is aware that athletics is moving forward. September 21st is right around the corner for our low-risk sports, soccer, what else?
Field hockey.
Field hockey.
Tennis, golf.
Tennis, golf.
Cross country.
Cross country and girls swimming for now, but I know there's still some discussion about that. So any questions for Mr. Iwanko about athletics?
Jay, quick question. Spectators at events.
So spectators outdoors, ECI sees as allowing, we're following the guidelines. So spectators outdoors, ECIC is allowing, following the guidelines, two spectators per player. So what ECIC is doing is they're making credentials. So each kid will get two credentials lanyards that they can use for their parents. Anything indoors, no spectators. So swimming, there'd be no spectators for swimming.
Jack, do you want to ask a question?
There hasn't been any guidance with concession stands. I mean, I would talk to Doug Dolan just to see what the guidelines are for her, how we're doing our packed lunches. I don't know how it would work outside that way. Yeah, definitely. Anything else?
Uh, Jay, what do the numbers look like? Have you had sign-ups yet? Or, I know everything's very fluid at this point in time.
So I actually did on an online forum, a spreadsheet in June, so I had about 180 students sign up for fall sports. So we're going through the list now, double checking with physicals and things like that. So that's the most accurate list I have now.
Is it varsity only, or is it modified JV?
All sports, modified JV and varsity.
Um, just kind of thinking down the road in regards to some things. Have we tested lights? Have we tested scoreboards? Have we water fountain slash up at the concession stand?
Water's still out on?
It's a water bottle filled, one.
They're working on that now, getting everything ready. Once we got the okay, today, we officially got the okay from our Section 6 and ECIC the other day. So they already know kind of like a to-do list they have to do. Our grounds crew, I know our grounds crew saw the lights yesterday, and they mentioned something today about some of the lights that we may have to look at, so.
So practice starts September 21st. The earliest the first game could be would be?
October 2nd. That Friday.
I do have a question. If there are games or events on the weekend, and I haven't looked at a schedule, so maybe there aren't, do the kids have to submit a separate COVID screen? Like, how does that work as far as?
So that would be like a policy that we have to come up with. Right now, what I'm thinking about is we can use the COVID questionnaire. We can use that as our testing for our kids now, Monday through Friday, the kids that are remote as well. We can use that. We can send it to the coaches to see who didn't fill it out for attendance and for the questionnaire. And for the weekends, we would have to have scanners. I'm working on with Chad Bliss to have kind of like a COVID little kit for our coaches. Every coach would have to make sure we're safe. Every coach would have hand sanitizer, mask, disposable mask, gloves to clean the equipment, things like that. And also, I did ask him for hand thermometers so the coaches would be able to check too as well. And then the last thing would be for, it would be a policy that we may have to come up with for visiting schools, for temperature checks as well as that. Do we want to temperature check spectators? It's not mandatory, but we could, but just something to think about.
And then the last question I've got is transportation back for practice. The athletes will be on their own, school will not be providing that?
From away meets or from?
No, so for instance, if like Cohort C on a Thursday practice, they're responsible for getting back to school for practice.
Yes, that's correct.
Thanks.
It is. I'm just happy for our kids with the opportunity. I saw what happened in the spring, and I felt bad for our kids. I'm just excited to have our kids out there. It's a big part of their athletic career.
I do have one more quick question. This might, this probably should be something I should know, but the weight room is closed, correct?
Correct, the fitness center is closed until further notice.
Now, no athlete's going to be allowed to use the weight room, is my understanding?
Correct.
Okay.
We, at ECIC, made a decision on it that we were a go. So I would assume we're ready to go on the 21st. I've talked to Shawna Kohler, our coach. She has a great plan that she's going to do cohorts to make the teams smaller so that they can practice safely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, student report. Do you have anything for us? Abby looks thrilled.
Yeah, obviously, as we all know, it's been a huge transition period for us, going from, for everybody, going from, you know, fully in school, fully online, now to this hybrid system. But at least from my point of view and the people around me, it's been going really well, considering just kind of being thrown in this whole new environment. But Zoom classes, we're still figuring out just the logistics of how to get them to work most effectively, but, you know, we're making progress every day. I think it's been really helpful that it's been super easy to get in contact with teachers. Like, I get responses back so quickly, not even the most trivial questions. It's great. I think it's a huge improvement from last year, and we're all just so out of sync with each other. But, I mean, everyone's just been super patient with each other, just been helping a lot. And, I mean, it's going a lot better than I expected, that's for sure.
Any concerns?
Um, I think one concern, just, I mean, obviously, everyone's doing the best they can with Zoom, but from mine and my classmates' experiences in the classes we've had online, is that a lot of the time, like, the teachers obviously are wearing a mask and walking around their classroom, so like, we just can't hear a lot of the time. It's super muffled. So, like, especially, I missed a lesson the other day for a doctor's appointment, and so I'm watching the recording later at night, and I have to, like, answer questions based on it, and I just couldn't make out most of the words to do it, you know? And I think, obviously, that's something we're still going to be working on. It's just been a little difficult for the past week, but.
Like you said, we're still working things out, and
Yeah.
And I think everybody's, you know, going to realize, hey, I've kind of got to stand a certain area to get recorded properly.
Yeah.
We're all figuring this out, so good to hear constructive criticism.
And don't be afraid to share that with the teacher, because they want to do a great job.
Right.
And it's brand new for them, just like this meeting and how muffled we can be here, so please share that. And if you're not comfortable, then let me know, and I'll do it for you.
I can handle it.
I sense that already.
All right, board report, roundtable.
All right, so just I want to give one update. So the COVID questionnaire resets at midnight. So for those early risers that don't want to hear texts from Mr. Lyons, at 5:00 in the morning, I appreciate the 5:30 one this morning. But just so if anybody knows, you can actually do it at midnight to start it. So it starts with a new day. So Jen, yes, you could do it at midnight. And I will say, the system is working. A friend of mine had, as she put it, a mom moment, and logged on late and basically checked, yes, I'm learning, I got COVID, I'm learning home remotely. She promptly got a phone call and was like, I know I was late. And they were trying to explain to her that it was, it's not because you were late, you're saying your child has COVID. It's like, no. It was just, it was, it was an issue, and just to let you know, the system is working, and I've heard about it, so.
So in that case, the document is live, so if a parent or guardian makes an error, they can go back in and change it, and it will show up, and it will fix the reports. So in the example that you share, if she quickly recognized that mom moment and logged back in and changed it, the report would automatically be updated.
So I could submit multiple reports for one kid if I could?
Yes, but then we're going to call you and ask why you need to submit multiple reports for one child, and we'll give you your own tutorial. Yes, you could.
I meant like two, not multiple.
All right, anything else from the board?
I just wanted to say I'm pleased to be on the reimbursement and what it's maybe for not to be a surprise that I'm asking a place, please.
I'll just say personally, for both my kids, school has started off really great. I mean, I had some nervous Nellies at home the night before, just asking me questions that I literally did not have the answer to, and I said, just take a deep breath, a lot of, what if I'm late? What if I, it's the first day, we're not going to get detention the first day, it's okay, take a deep breath. And there's just, they were, I'll say, especially for my high schooler, she was relieved just with how things went. Lunch wasn't nearly as traumatizing as she thought it was going to be. And it just, she's happy to have her locker, even though she doesn't really use it that much, and she just likes knowing that she can go to it if she needs to. So it was just good to hear. I have a lot of big sighs of relief at home now, and I'm just happy to get our first full week under our belt and hoping it continues, fingers crossed. I do have one quick question, Laura. I meant to ask you, I had, my neighbor texted me, and I'm sorry if this is a taboo question. Star rebate checks, I asked, do you have any idea if they're coming out or?
No, I don't have a timetable on my kid's shop.
Okay.
But they come out of the New York State Tax Department.
Okay, because the big thing is Hamburg supposedly got theirs, and I was just being bombarded with, why isn't it here? I didn't have a response.
I don't know the answer, but I will talk into it now.
I'll just say it's up to New York State.
Or it's up to the town.
Is it really?
Yeah. All right, anything else? All right, Alan, you're next.
The next regular Board of Education meeting is Wednesday, October 14th, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the Eden Elementary School Auditorium. And now?
Wait, do we have executive session?
All right. So if we go to the next one, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carried.